Just a reminder that masks are required on school property at this time. So if you're not wearing a mask, we have masks available out in the lobby there. Refusal of wear mask could result in further restrictions and further meetings. So please comply with the rules. Thank you.
We'll call our meeting to order. Ms. Brownie, roll call.
All members are present.
Thank you. Next, we have the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have the election of officers. And as you all can see, with the retirement of Mrs. Nowell, the position of secretary is open. So if I could get a nomination from the board for an appointment for secretary, that would be great.
I move that Louise Jackson be appointed Secretary of the Carmel Clay School Board.
Thank you, Mike. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Katie. Discussion. Seeing no discussion, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of Louise Jackson for Secretary of the Carmel Clay School Board, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries for zero. Congratulations, Louise. Next on the agenda, we have our first and only presentation. It's for the NAFA Clean Air Award. And to that, we turn to Dr. Beresford.
Thank you. Real excited tonight. And I'd like to introduce Mr. Ernie Kelly, who's the President of FSI Filtration. And he's going to come forward and give Marty St. John an award on behalf of the district. So come on to the podium and take her away.
Try to keep this brief. My name's Ernie Kelly, and I also have Casey Harpold, my Vice President of Operations, with us today to give the Clean Air Award to the Carmel Clay School District. Thank you again for allowing us to make this presentation. The purpose of the Clean Air Award is to recognize leadership and excellence in air filtration. The Clean Air Award program has been instituted by NAFA in order to promote and recognize the usage of high-efficiency filtration products and good maintenance practices. Anyway, it is presented for outstanding effort in maintaining a clean and healthy indoor work environment while reducing overall operating cost. The award is based on 10 different criteria, and points are awarded for the performance and compliance of each. Just a few facts here. Carmel Clay Schools was the only Indiana organization to receive this this year. Past winners, 2018 Harvard University. We successively submitted last year Indiana Convention Center and Lucas Oil Stadium. So you're in great company. Just a very, very brief on how this came about. Under the previous leadership of Mr. Ron Farron, this process started a couple of years ago with his interest in reducing energy costs for the school district, reducing CO2 emissions, and actually looking at the overall cost, filter costs from cradle to grave. So looking to save money, improve on several different levels. So products that have lower pressure drops and longer life were chosen to achieve the aforementioned. And in fact, energy costs were reduced by 14.86 percent. The CO2 emissions were cut by 15.22 percent. Using final filtrations that last longer cut material costs by 17 percent. And labor and disposal costs were significantly reduced. So a conservative estimate of what annual savings has been granted to Carmel Clay Schools is in excess of $110,000. Very, very good. So I would also like to recognize Marty St. John. Give him a little special recognition as he was our point person that implemented the indoor air quality program changes and supplied us with detailed documentation and access we needed for this submission. Marty, your hard work and dedication and attention to detail greatly appreciated. And lastly, while meeting with Mr. Todd, I hope he pronounces Todd Fanolio. We discussed this is only a piece of the overall vision that he is hoping to accomplish as the Director of Facilities. And you know, under Todd's leadership, it will be fun to witness and track his team's accomplishments, and we stand ready to help in any way. Unfortunately, tonight, we have left in the transportation building the actual award. But I did want to say on, we have these actual decals that will be going on each one of your facilities, and it's basically stating that each building is the recipient of the Clean Air Award for 2021. I strongly encourage you guys to promote this, social media. Let everybody know what's going on because this is at the height of, in a pandemic, of what people need to concentrate on. And there's a lot of comfort level that they will gain from knowing that you guys are doing the necessary and extra steps to keep their environment protected. With that, I thank you and congratulations. Is it okay for me to answer questions?
No, we don't. That's not how the meetings work. Thank you.
My apologies. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. Next on the agenda, we have consent. And with consent, we have the personnel report, claims, payroll, approval of gifts. And we do have two different gifts on here. We've got Creekside Middle School donated, or patrons of Creekside Middle School donated $3,815 to the Performing Arts Department. And there was also an anonymous gift of $1,000 to cover expenses for the Willy Wonka musical at just Carmel Clay Schools in general. James L. and Janetta S. Leslie donated land. And Dr. B., could you speak to where that land is located?
Yes, that property is just east of the trail and probably 100 yards or so. Starts 100 yards or so south of 116th as you go up the trail. And we actually own a residential lot right just east of the trail, on the corner of the trail on 136th Street. And this property is essentially behind that property that we own and goes clear to the creek. So there's no longer direct access to the property, but certainly we welcome and appreciate the gift because now, because that was the one piece of property that we don't own that's contiguous with the trail on the east side. So very much appreciate it.
Thank you for that explanation. And then we also have minutes for the executive session on August the 2nd, as well as August 24th workshop session, August 11th, and August 23rd. May I get a motion to approve consent?
Move to consent. Move to approve consent.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Excuse me, consent. Excuse me, you're out of order. Excuse me, you're out of order. End of meeting. Meeting recess.
Let's go. Let's open up public comments for hours. Let's have something actionable. One of their tenets, one of their fundamental beliefs is transparency. After their websites, their source is supposed to be transparency and information to parents. Tell me how this does that. Their children, their family, their children, they don't listen to parents at all. And then we have hundreds of students that are pulled by their parents out of school. And somehow that's because we're not getting enough people in Carmel. Please. People are pulling their kids from the school for a reason. Then they clean it on the housing or find some other excuse. Clean air award. Clean air award when they're stuck in there from burning out. They had ultraviolet lights that would kill the bacteria in the air that would be clean air. And our children wouldn't have. Said they choose to change the whole methodology. Our children, our children may have cancer in a couple of years.
Anybody else here have curiosity? Do you want threats remaining after the school board? Maybe if there were threats for the parent, maybe they could work.
The only threat that I know of was the school board meeting where there was a gun that was drawn out of the market. That was the only threat that I remember.
So about one word that's right. I think the press or what the board is implementing against us, the press of, we can't see the the threat earlier today, they just run the law that they'll take care of their action and take away our privileges.
Rights.
This is not a threat.
Come on, come on. They are responsible to us. We should have a voice in how our children are acting in here and administer while they're in school. That's why they omitted the portion that says you can read the SBL survey from the official school house on the 23rd of August. It's just one. Other speakers have it posted on their website with a link.
This is a public meeting. This is the time we're supposed to be having a meeting. They're writing your own rules in regards to how they hold these meetings in the first place.
Can I even fair?
We moved to the Red Carmel out of California because we were told the school was going to not say. And if you look at the history of Carmel Clay Schools, it's been a nice thing. It's 2014 at least, and that's the term. And that's what we need. We need to have creative game academic excellence. We need the rest of this scholarship done. We need to get out of here. We need our teachers, our kids, our kids, and our school board for to focus on the academics. Our kids need to be, they need to fight, they need their math skills. That's what they need. We have graduating students who are not anywhere near the love of the Carmel Clay Schools, who is to be at our school. At least about 50% of the proficiency, let's call it that, because we're not there. You would imagine that that district, you know, with the historical record of excellent would be above 50% proficiency in math and reading, right?
We also have to teach that everybody deserves equal respect. And I don't think anybody here in the room would disagree with that. That kids need to feel respected and we need to feel safe in school. We all want that, right? We're listening. We're really listening to ideas that probably make that better for everybody. But that is teaching advanced philosophy compared to young critical minds where we're getting into cross-stress. And we could just say, hey, you're different on the outside, and you're different on the outside, and you're different on the other. But so what? You're all the same on the inside. We all have to learn to respect each other, right? There we go. You need to know that kids feel safe and welcome and respected in school.
There's also a motion that they are trying to propagate with children, talks about the day. Talks about beauty, right, with the children. Tell me how much of that is going on here with our wonderful board? When they get up and they walk out on the parents that are paying, the taxpayers that are paying for them to go to school. When they know clearly there are upset parents here, and it's not just the people that are in the car. They just want a quality education for them. All we want is quality education.
My kids are graduating. I'm here as a concerned taxpayer and more because all around my house, our kids' parents are busy doing what parents do when their kids are lost. There are coaches, there are sports, they're all in church. They're getting around the table, they're working. Not all of them have time to be here. So I think several of us here are in the same boat. Not necessarily our kids, but that doesn't mean we don't have the right to be here. And I do deserve that. I love those kids that are on my, my neighbors. They think I'm the worst. I'm sorry, I have a pastor and I'm going to spend money to support schools. I'm going to have to always.
I mean, you know what? We trusted these people. Now, I look at myself and say, you know what? I may have dropped the ball, and I didn't keep my eye on what was going on. I don't think we can all look at that, right? We let this happen, and I take some responsibility for this, but we trust, trusted them with our children, and they violated that trust. And it's time to take it back.
It's not usually like this.
Sometimes it's bad. Ever sat back and given a discussion how math matters?
There are. Why do you have a discussion?
There's no discussion on what your teachers or what's behind that.
No, they don't. They work on the website where you're supposed to put on a little plant. Oh, not available.
See, we're going to have to, this is going to be, this is going to be forever.
So all board meetings are about hearing from a remand of a comment. Use comments. It will interrupt you in mid-comment and tell you your time is over, and there's no doubt. So we can come with concern, you can present it as in may state in law.
So I thought you were supposed to like to connect with us and that's forever. The content is on the internet.
That is on the internet. They are considering whether to allow comments. By law, they do not have.
Because you guys are naughty. You're right. Now it's time to take it up because we have to show you who's wrong.
Right. So there are two policies that they were going to go on tonight. One was 0167.3, which restricts public comment. The second was 9600, which was stability in decorum. This is a brand-new policy. So they're not only going to control who can talk, but what they can say and how they can say it. So if anyone wants copies of this, you are more than welcome. I brought one because they didn't share with the public. I love this quote by George Orwell. If liberty means anything at all, it means to tell people what they do not want to hear. And you know what? They don't want to hear this, but they need to hear this. And we will not disciple. You can't disciple. If we have to take it outside so that our message can be heard, we need to do that. And we basically do what we're talking about. Make it come out. We want our students to be so unique.
They're welcome here at our meeting.
I would love to say academic excellence. How do we enter more conversation? What are we doing in that? What are we doing for our students to be invited? But you know what? Nobody said anything when we changed from academic excellence to together we achieve. There's a we don't. If you take a look at our scores, they have been in decline, and they continue to decline. So together we achieve no we don't. Our scores continue to drop. And as a teacher, what I can tell you, that all of this SBL stuff takes time away from teachers teaching. And when your elementary students start 15, 30 minutes every morning getting ready to start their day, that's kind of they're not teaching. And we don't have minutes to spare. And we don't have minutes to spare. How would we change that? Uh, November of twenty twenty two. Because basically, we, there will be three seats up in November of twenty twenty two, and they are district seats. And behind people that will run, that we can back, that are going to take back the schools, that are willing to say, we made some mistakes. I'm not saying we have absolutely, I mean, I've been here since nineteen seventy, there have been mistakes. And we don't ever redo that, and I do believe that. But it needs to get back to where we focus, our first focus was academic excellence. And that's what we're going to do. My, my, my are really plump, but I am a property here. And what everybody needs to pay attention to is what's happening in Westfield. Because that superintendent has outlawed this stuff. He's ordered on to Westfield. Well, we kicked off the year with a hundred on our S E L, so we never met. It's a question, it's a call my mom, I'm first generation.
You can't ratify the teacher contract. Now, if the teacher won't get paid their raise in time and that. Oh, well, so, you know. If we could have some, if we could have some civility.
Yeah, I'll tell you what, throw away these policies.
All in all, it's great.
When you guys raised our taxes so much for the, um, the officers in schools, are they in all the schools right now? Is that, is that what we're talking about there?
Alright, after that, we need to pay bills. So, we need to do that.
Yeah, you guys take them on. Yeah.
Listen up.
Who pays the bills?
How about, how about you take these things off the agenda? For stifling us and we'll listen.
It doesn't matter.
Why are you only filming now? Why didn't you film when we were talking about sports and when we were all being civil on this great roundtable? Why, why are you trying to, I know what you're trying to do, you're gonna try to trick us. It's just no seriously.
I, I, I'd like, I'd like the board to come back and-
We're in the media.
I'm gonna try.
Can you have the board come back and answer my question of why my junior can't write in cursive? He's seventeen years old and he cannot write in cursive. You're supposed to train our children for college.
Cause I've seen some of their printing.
I know. They don't teach cursive anymore. Are you supposed to sign a check for quote? Yeah.
You know, you know, I had, I had a boss. And I will say what major, major company I worked for downtown, but I had a group of class. And he used to say the greatest unifier is success. He used to say the greatest unifier is success. It's not a surprise that kids are being divided. If you ever worked at a sports team, if you ever worked on a business team, if you ever worked on any type of team, environment where they're spiraling and they're failing, leaders start pointing. And people start to avoid it. The way to unify this community and the way to unify the children is to lift the boat by academics. And then, and then we will see the children joyful. Cause right now, they're trying to focus on problems that actually do not exist. But the things that truly do exist, which are their ability to catch a child when they graduate from high school. Their ability to communicate effectively with another human being with good concept resolution skills without going to a Zen deck. They are learning these things. And I'm gonna repeat it, the way to lift this boat and unify this community is to experience success. And the way to that success is what this lady said, is to academic excellence, be monstrous towards academic excellence.
There has to be that, that foundation for kids that have, that success, they have to have a foundation that's still one that they feel safe when they go to school, right? Right? And, and you've got to learn how to respect other people who make a little bit of difference on them on the outside. Right? And then, and so everyone will respect each other. Some very fundamental things. We're, we're reflecting these kids' minds, reflecting getting into these advanced theories. And that's actually seem to be teaching. And it's having a negative effect. Well, this effect was built in by the year. Hey, they may become from a different family that's, than the way yours looks. It doesn't matter. Everybody's family's different. They may look very gross to you, it doesn't matter. Everybody respects them. Okay? Once that's established, that everybody's safe and has an equal footing of, they're all different, so that's okay. We're all different, but basically it's all the same. Then we can learn and get focused on them. We don't have to get into advanced theories of sociology and where we went wrong, right? We're moving forward. Let's teach these things and force these things that you're being taught at home. Don't forget, always a huge key in all of that. And then, yes, it's time for schoolwork and schoolwork and schoolwork. Yes, I want to see the school get better from that corner of what we need. No, a lot of things. I've had to unteach my children much what they learn with eighty lots in the high school. I went and I found they have learned. And then I found about that evidence, how to teach them, okay? I don't like the school teaching the kids things that I don't believe in at home. That's my wife and I don't believe in at home. Everybody's always been walking in my house. White kids never do any different.
Look at your siblings, let the parents teach the values at home. And let the teachers get back to doing what they do.
But we have to be respectful.
She's saying something that's impossible. And you're not in line. Let's talk to competition. Why not? Why would you?
We're all even respectful and we all would love to know what you're thinking, cause that's something we're all gonna move forward. Expertise and edit our impressions. Nothing but our own.
It's unfortunate that we're where we are. You know, everyone's always been telling me to walk the aisle. This is my turn. This is my turn. This is my turn. And I'm getting my family a better chance of, I think, I've seen that so many days. Having integrity, gender, it is not, it's not expecting. But it's been, and then great students. I'm from Texas. And I'm just trying to connect with somebody who does not know to alter them. I wonder why. Lady Paul. Tell me. Teach me something.
I know.
What does that have to do with my education?
Not about that though. We're not, we're not, we're not about that.
How is it? We've always been known for our work. For decades. In order to honor, and all of that, and we don't even know that.
I'm brown. I get nervous.
I'm brown too.
I'm brown.
Yes.
My kids are not, when I go to my kids in a bad situation, white men and people have not brought me. I love my kids more than I love myself. So, not even bringing out there. And I did a good play. These are the school practices were around me. They own the school, but, uh, white kids, they have kids, they went to a party today. They're not brown, none of them were brown. He didn't walk. They've seen it.
You have to be.
She just brought it in. By scared them to talk about it. We weren't talking about that. We weren't talking about that. And how about it? Education. It all goes back to excellence in education. That's all we're striving for. For everyone. We just want our kids taught. We just want them to talk. Excellence in education. And this.
Well, I, I've got to say this because the thing in here I'm concerned about, I'm, I'm a young teacher, okay? I, I, it does not really matter that much to me, but what bothers me is that I hear colleges are accepting people in their programs. And I can't start out with the same level of educational requirements that they did twenty-five, thirty years ago. They have to go back to the immediate level. Because the high schools are not preparing the kids well enough to be able to compete at college or in engineering courses. Now, if you think, if you think that's a good thing for the country, that's not. Because that's going to make it much more difficult for us to be able to compete and maintain our way of life, our standard of living, and trying to help everybody include themselves. And engineering is just one area. I know this is happening in other areas too of science. And, and, and it is really troubling to me that I had a gentleman come up and tried to talk about, uh, raises for teachers. I, I, I don't, I don't have a problem with that because I didn't see the academics score definition by thirty-something percent. I mean, when I was working in, in, in industry, if, if that happened in my division, I didn't deal with it. As a matter of fact, I might have gotten five. You're gonna get the extra credit.
Well, do you miss the meeting where we gave the super independent rating? Yeah, he knew God was.
There's some point, and gentlemen, comments in this perspective, why shouldn't it be important to you coming in too? You want to be driving in your car, for some of it's not your brakes, it's, it can't hit you too. Yeah, that's exactly. Right? Are you sure, if he's, it's supposed to be kind of low. Yeah.
But that's what those proficiencies have started saying.
When you hit the brakes and your head's in the wall, it doesn't count.
That's not a year ago, they were able to do that in a car. And now, they are not.
Seven years ago, they were very much.
I graduated in nine. And I have a little guy that's twenty-five. Stuff he does not deal with, and that's state high school. Might be running over here. And the thing, they were overseas in the nineties about to run schools. And this is what we are. For one of the three hundred, they're not obvious. And anything that's four, she's walking. I mean, I just picked up my parents. And then he said, they're doing this circle thing where they're, they're talking about their emotions and doing stories about their emotions. And I said, what about your mom? My daughter? And, and he says, well, we didn't do today, because he did this. And I said, I thought this was gonna be mad like a gang, it was wobbly in this town. And I'm like, oh, you know what they're, they have, uh, they're also, they have videos because last year was all online. So, they have the kids go home and watch the videos, teach themselves, dominate the class. And the teacher stands up and runs the class and says, question page one? He questions page two? He questions page three? And then they break them into groups. And then the kids work like critical problems in their small groups on the top floor. They have their, they're not teaching. They're not teaching. And the students wait, and then the students, a lot of them are not doing well. So, we went to the principal and had a meeting and he said, well, he has COVID and he has, well, this wasn't the principal, this was his partner head. But my point is, we can't use an excuse. First of all, why are they not teaching? Why are they not scanning? My daughter had stuff one day and the subject of problem on the, on the top floor. And my daughter and her whole class were like, oh my gosh, she just taught more than we heard all semester.
I was starting to say that kind of stuff in a narrative school.
That, and then we asked, how were the teachers being paid? You know what the response was from the last time I had? Well, it depends, I have it on, I have it recorded, but it, it, it depends on how much they contribute outside of the classroom, how much they volunteer, how active they are at school. But they need everybody. I think based on academics, I do not, I said, I'm a personal trainer. If I was training a three hundred pound diabetic that consistently did not lose weight under my care as a trainer, that I would be fired. That would not even be a good job, right? So, if the kids are failing, then are we teaching them? I don't know. That's sad, that is so sad. So, what do we do? We hire tutors. We all got tutors and we're spending a hundred and twenty-five hundred fifty dollars on the tutors.
With this, those, when it comes to apps, the great people always are, they need to be asked to add them. And there are people that can afford, and those, and there are people that can't afford those.
They should have known. And that is awful. That is awful. Because that again creates greater inequity. And division for all, for children. Right? Cannot afford those tutors. Right? Right? Or parents. We can afford the tutors, twelve hours a day. And can't help their kids. Those kids are cheap. Or inequities within families. What if you see that one of your children has a better chance and you get only the tutor for that one? I do want to say something about the teachers. I know a lot of them. Um, for the most part, the teachers are one of your tailors. And the majority of our teachers are phenomenal and put in, um. And I'm sure, well, they did a lot of heavy lifting, um, to get through COVID, especially our middle school and our high school teachers. Um, elementary, they were in all the time and that worked out. But our middle school and high school, they were not only teaching in person, but they were also teaching online. So, I think we need to be careful when we start, we need to act like we're all of us. Who's service is this? Well, and I, I do want to say.
Right. What can we as pastors do to help the teachers do their principal job? I mean, it's, it's, I'm not, I must be, I'm old. And, and, but when I went to grade school, uh, we had fifty-plus kids in the classroom. You know, at the end of the year, every one of those kids could do their multiplication tables. They knew how to read, they could write in cursive. It was because the teachers were allowed to do the principal thing, because they were supposed to do. And that was not worried about all this other nonsense, but hey, you know what? It's math today.
But that pressure comes from the top down. And, and it's not all, all the teachers. And I do want to say this because they can clearly be really clear. SEL and DEI is what we've always done. We've always had kids that came from home. And we have always wrapped our arms around those kids and things. And to me, that's what's very important. Um, this is first, is that we're seeing all the, there's some of that.
All those in favor of supporting consent, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. Next on the agenda, we have our first action item, Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. So, um, this item is, uh, recommendation is to ratify the teacher's contract. And there's an opportunity for public comment for this. And then after the, that opportunity, uh, we would recommend that you approve, approve the contract so that we can, uh, provide salary increases for our teachers.
Thank you, Mr. McMichael. May I get a motion on the table to approve?
I'm.
So moved. Mike, excuse me, please, please. Thank you very much.
One second.
We've got a first from Mike, a second discussion.
Hey, Leila, do a first from Katie.
Katie first, Louise second. So. Right now, we have a hearing and we have an opportunity for members of the public to speak about the teacher contract. If you wish to speak about the teacher contract, please approach the podium.
Say thirty minutes. Make sure you say thirty minutes.
Thirty minutes.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you all this evening. Um, I know that you are looking at raises for our teachers and I know very well that our teachers work very hard. Unfortunately, starting in twenty fourteen, the academic scores for the Carmel Clay School Systems have declined. We are now at the point where we've lost double digits. We've lost the double digits in terms of our students' academic excellence. We no longer have excellence for our students in the area of academics. I'd like to understand when and how the curriculums for Carmel Clay Schools are reviewed. What are we doing in mathematics? What's our curriculum there? What are we doing in our language arts? What are the books that are being read in the rooms? What are the books that are being studied? Why are there pornographic materials?
Ma'am, do you have comments on the teacher contract?
I'm sorry?
Do you have, do you have comments on the teacher contract?
Yes, I am saying that although we have outstanding teachers, what they're fighting is top-down influence. They're being, having to teach things that-
Ma'am, do you have comments on the content of the teacher contract?
Do you have comments?
I'm sorry, I am talking, I am talking about the teachers and the teacher's contract. You want to give raises, but they're not performing. And they're not performing because you all are making them do things, SEL, DEI. You are taking away valuable academic teaching time out of the school day, from our students. They are not academically excellent any longer. They are not going to get into the top colleges. They are not going to be successful because they are not well-educated.
My name is Vicki Bodnar. I live at twenty, Lector Port in Carmel, Indiana. I live here, I'm a resident.
Taxpayer.
Taxpayer. Carmel Community, our First Amendment rights are being attacked by this school board. Two policies that will be voted on later tonight, revisions to zero one six seven point three regarding public comment.
Excuse me, could you please speak? Anybody else wishing to speak to the content of the teacher contract?
I'm gonna speak to the, I'll speak to the content of the teacher contract. I'd like to know, Vicki Yamazaki, a resident of Carmel. I've been a longtime businesswoman, a senior executive, and there is no way that we would ever be compensated without results. We have seen over a thirty-point decline in the proficiency of our children's English and math scores since two thousand fourteen, consistently going down each year through this year. And yet, you're going to still continue to increase their compensation? And you do this with administration as well. I'd like to ask you, when you're going to link their compensation to the actual results?
Okay, looks like we're ready to take a vote. All those in favor of supporting the teacher contract, they signify by saying aye. Oh, discussion, thank you so much. We had a first and second and then discussion. Thank you. Discussion. All those in favor of supporting the teacher contract, may I get a motion on the table? Yes. So moved. Yes. So, the floor is open for discussion.
Thank you. I would like to thank the bargaining team for both sides, both CTA and the administration. Thank you for all your hard efforts. I'd also like to thank Carmel Clay teachers for all they do every day to make Carmel Clay Schools the greatest schools in the state. And-
Thank you very much, Mike. Any other comments?
Yeah, I too would like to say thank you to the teachers that are, um, coming to work every day and trying to set our children up for success and persevering through the challenges that have been thrown their way. I really appreciate, um, I really appreciate their focus and, um, that they have not done anything to, um, diminish the quality of education that we provide our children. So, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. All those in favor, and, and, any other discussion items? Seeing there's no other discussion, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of supporting the teacher contract, please signify by saying aye and show. Aye. Any?
Thank you, I will abstain from this vote.
Thank you, Mike. Please let the record show. Three in support, Mike Kirschner has sustained or abstained from voting. Next on the agenda, we have items five point two through five thirteen. May I move, may I get a motion on the table? So moved.
Second.
Second. Discussion. Seeing that there are no discussion, all those in favor of supporting five point two through five thirteen, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries four zero, Colleen. Next on the agenda, we have five point one four, adoption of bylaw zero one six seven point three. May I get a motion on the table? Thank you, Katie.
Second.
Thank you, Louise. We have a first from Katie and a second discussion. All those in favor of supporting the adoption of bylaw zero one six seven point three, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. Adoption of bylaw zero one six seven point three. Next on the agenda, adoption of policy ninety-six hundred civility and decorum.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. The open discussion that we will have this evening is that there's never a more imperative time that we have a civility and decorum policy and bylaw on our records. All those in favor of supporting civility and discussion, decorum, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. Next on the agenda, we have public hearings. Or may I get a motion on the table to, um-
I'd like to take a motion, I'd like to make a motion to, um, table six point one and six point two.
Thank you. Thank you. All those in favor of this, Katie motion, yes, to table six and seven, six. Six point one and six point two?
Six point one and six point two for another time.
Okay. Yeah. Any reports to share? Yeah, any reports to share?
We do have the unveiling, um, for Carmel, Carmel Clay Parks Recreation. We do have the unveiling for the mural that was painted by one of our CHS students. And so I wanted to remind everybody to check that out. Um, the unveiling helped, happened just a couple hours ago, but, um, super excited about that work. And a heartfelt thank you to the student that designed and helped with that. I also wanted to share that we have Bear Creek Park that we are, um, putting together plans for. So you can learn more about, um, the evolution of that park and share your thoughts and comments for that as well. So, um, check that out as well. That's, thank you. Thank you.
Any other reports? Any other reports?
No, just a second, um, Louise's report. I did attend the, the mural ribbon cutting and Carolyn Hammonds was a student who created, uh, the mural that is now inside the entire, um, tunnel on the Monon Trail. And it's just amazing. And, uh, the, uh, kudos to her, of course, and her creativity and talent, but also to the, uh, the art department chair, Jen Bub, who, uh, Jen and a lot of the art department all worked together to, uh, to make that real life, you know, um, experience happen. And so, uh, it was kind of a real great collaboration between the city parks and then the school and then, uh, which afforded an opportunity for the Art National Honor Society to, to do a, a real-life project and then work with the professionals. And, uh, it was just a really, um, really special time and congratulations to, to all the people that were involved with that. It was really, really good. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have public hearing. Our first public hearing is budget two thousand twenty-two.
Yes, thank you. There's actually opportunity, as you know, there will be three public hearings, first being, um, input to the budget. The board will not act on any of these items until at the, the last meeting in October, at which time we'll ask for a recommendation to approve the budget. And then it will go through a process at the state, for the state to approve it, as well as the, uh, two plans, the capital plan and the bus replacement plan.
Thank you.
So now there's the opportunity for public comment first on the budget.
Okay, so at this time, I'll suspend a regular board meeting and open a public hearing to allow for public input regarding the proposed two thousand twenty-two budget. On September thirteenth, Mr. McMichael presented the proposed two thousand twenty-two budget. The board discussed a proposal and authorized administration to advertise for public hearing. Mr. Michael, you did share some information with regards to the budget. Is there anything else you'd like to share before we take public comment about the two thousand twenty-two budget?
No, I think, uh, this meeting is for opportunity, just for public, uh, comment on, on the budgets.
Okay. So at this time, we'll offer members of the community an opportunity to make comments regarding budget two thousand twenty-two. If you have a comment about the budget that has been posted, please approach the podium, state your name.
Hello again, my name is Vicky Bogner. I understand we're about two million dollars short on the proposed buzzet, budget. Is that true?
What, the comment that was made was that our revenue was two million dollars less because of less enrollment than what was projected. This is not an opportunity for public discussion, it's an opportunity for public comment on the budget. If you'd like to make a comment on the budget, feel free to do so.
Thank you.
It's not an opportunity to have a dialogue of questions.
The question then would be.
That would be anytime you'd like to make an appointment to come and see me, sir.
Ma'am, Mrs. Bogner, did you have any other comments you wanted to make?
Yes, I did. Um, in understanding that the budget is going to be short because the revenue is short because some students are no longer going to the Carmel Clay School District, um, I am wondering if we might be looking forward to another referendum. Um, the safety referendum that the residents of Carmel voted for was not, um, applied to safety measures completely inside the school system. Um, we have a DEI officer, I believe, or administrator, ninety-four thousand dollars that could have been applied towards safety measures, went to hiring another administrator. So I am concerned, and perhaps we're not able to ask questions at this time, but I would like it to be noted in your meeting minutes that the public is well aware that the proposed budget is short and that something will be happening that may involve a Carmel residents' vote, um, needed to make the budget work. And we're watching where our money is spent.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to speak on the two thousand twenty-two budget? Seeing that there's nobody approaching the podium, we will move on to the next. We're opening a public hearing for the two thousand twenty-two bus replacement plan. Mr. McMichael, would you like to speak to the two thousand twenty-two bus replacement plan?
I would. It's a five-year, uh, bus replacement plan as, as specified and required by the state. The first year of the plan, uh, which would be twenty twenty-two, um, we're planning to purchase sixteen, uh, replacement buses. And, um, and beyond that, it's, uh, it's pretty straightforward. It's projecting the, the purchases over the next five years.
Thank you very much, Mr. McMichael. So at this time, we will open the podium for those wishing to speak on the two thousand twenty-two bus replacement plan. If you have any comments for the record, please approach the podium, state your name, and feel free to share your comments.
Hi, my name is Mike Smith. Boy, I first want to thank the board for, for letting me to speak tonight. It's an honor to be able to speak to y'all. We, um, didn't have enough bus drivers to drive the buses that we had this year. And with the declining enrollment, do we really need to replace so many buses if they're not being used anyways? I mean, we're not putting the miles on the bus now. How many miles are these buses being driven before we are looking at replacing them? I mean, maybe we need to change the tires and change the oil and keep them running a little bit longer. And do what a lot of people do in their, in their families, when, when things are tight, they, uh, they keep the old car running. There's no response from, from board, no, no comment from them. So honestly, I think this public comment is kind of useless unless our partners on the school administration and the school board want to engage in, uh, you know, civil, in our, uh, conversation. Thank you.
Is there anybody else wishing to speak during this hearing on the two thousand twenty-two bus replacement plan? Okay, seeing that we have no other speakers at this point in time, we will move on to our third public hearing, the two thousand twenty-two capital projects plan. At this time, we've suspended the regular meeting to open a public hearing to allow for public comment regarding the two thousand twenty-two capital projects plan. On September thirteenth, Mr. McMichael presented the proposed two thousand twenty-two capital projects plan. The board discussed a proposal and authorized administration to advertise for the public hearing. Mr. McMichael, would you like to make any comments with regards to the capital projects plan for two thousand twenty-two?
Yes, this is, um, a plan for projects that are, are financed through our operations fund. It's a three-year plan as prescribed by statute and it includes any anticipated expenses beyond ten thousand dollars. And so that's what you have before you, projections of those, uh, for each of the three years.
Thank you, Mr. McMichael. At this time, we'll offer members of the public an opportunity to approach the podium to speak to the capital projects plan.
I led strategy and, Vicky Yamazaki, I led strategy and capital management for well over fifteen years for a major multi-billion dollar company. And when we had shortfalls during the financial downturn in two thousand eight and two thousand nine, and I'd liken your two million dollar shortfall to something of that like, uh, likening. Uh, we, the first thing that we slashed was the capital budget. That was the first thing that went. And so I'd like to know, what is it that you're going to propose is moved off the table and moved into a more long-term strategy since you can't accomplish this? Because clearly, from what I've read, you're going to terminate or through attrition, reduce teachers' salaries. We've got academic performance issues, all right? We have a shortfall of over thirty percentage points since two thousand fourteen in both reading and arithmetic. And that is the last thing we need to do is slash teachers' compensation, uh, slash more heads in those classrooms. We need to cut the capital budget and probably the buses and, and just tighten our belts and probably slash the administration salaries.
Is there anybody else wishing to speak to the two thousand twenty-two capital projects plan? Okay, then at this time, we will close the hearings for the capital projects plan, the two thousand twenty-two budget plan and the two thousand twenty-two bus replacement plan. And next on the agenda is adjournment. May I get a motion to adjourn the meeting? Thank you, Katie, second. Thank you, Mike. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Meeting adjourned.